Would like to start its study session. I'm calling as we need to order. Roll call, please.
Member Robelski?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Hudson Akka?
Here.
Member Hall?
Here.
Member Carter's here. Vice President Exum?
Here.
And President Pulaski?
Here. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda?
No.
Hearing none. Make a call for citizen statements. If anybody would like to make a statement before the board, please fill out the Goldenrod Form and hand it to our reporting secretary. Hearing none. There is no call for executive session after this meeting. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then it is approved. We're starting off tonight with our study topic, Racial Equity Task Force.
Hey. Good evening, everybody. I'm really excited to be able to share the work of the Equity Task Force. We have some of our Equity Task Force members in the audience, and we actually have one in Zoom. John, did we remember that she was zooming in? Here she comes. Okay. So we have been working very diligently since early spring. We recruited members. We had an application process, and we have a very diverse group of educators, parents, administrators, who have been part of the process. So we're really thankful for their... I'm gonna put their names up at the end of this. So we are sure to... So everyone can see their names and we can recognize them as a group. But I just wanted to say at the beginning of this presentation, we gave up a lot of evenings from 5:30 to 7:00. Several of our staff members came directly from meetings at school, right into Zooms. We had people who were in class. We had parents working and taking classes. But I was very impressed with everyone's commitment, their time and energy and focus to the group. At the very beginning of our time together, we spent our first meeting or two just getting to know one another and talking about the work and building our capacity a little bit around the work. And then we just jumped right in. So one of our first tasks as a group was really to create a policy that would really undergird and just be the umbrella for all of our work moving forward. We have a lot of work left to do with this group and other work to do with our greater community and our stakeholders. So this is just the beginning. So we're really excited to share several months' worth of conversations and discussions. So I am going to start us off. We have people who are gonna jump in. I'm not gonna talk the whole time. We have a couple of board members here who are also part of the process. Tori, Exum, our vice president, Paul Pulaski, our president, and our newest member, Brian. He was a part of the group as a parent. So he also can join into the conversations. But we have other people from our committee who want to present. But I wanna encourage our board members to jump in too, because you guys are all part of these breakout groups and all of our conversations. So I'm gonna just set the stage a little bit and talk a little about our goals, why this work is important. And then we're gonna really just share some impressions and some of the people from the committee. We're not gonna read to everyone, because the draft of the policy was shared out publicly. We didn't get any written comments, but I know our board members may have some suggestions and comments. I did meet with board members who were not part of the committee, the ones who were willing and wanted to learn a little bit more. So I know a couple of our board members have questions. Anne and Laura and Brenda met with me, and they have some things that they're gonna share or some thoughts that they would like to share publicly. So let's jump right into it. So our priorities. As a district, we've talked about these priorities a lot. We've had these discussions at the building level, with teachers, administrators, at all levels. We've talked about these as our main priorities following post-remote learning. And as we're in the pandemic, full horse, 18 months into this, we know one of our main priorities, we've talked at the board level about learning renewal, really recouping some of the learning and some of the academic skills that our students are lacking or have lost. Social-emotional learning. We had a great presentation in our last meeting where we talked about the multi-tier systems of supports. And one of those biggest systems is our social-emotional learning curriculum equity, which we'll talk about tonight. Student and family engagement, technology and digital equity, and of course, professional development for our teachers and our administrators. So these are some of the priorities that we are really wrapping around this year. You've seen the district goals. Mrs. Norton has shared those. We've talked about all the school improvement planning goals. We've talked about the fact that we have... Every single one of our buildings has an SEL goal, a math goal, a literacy goal. And we also ask every school to really focus their goals and their school improvement planning around equity as well at their building levels. We know that the pandemic has really impacted all of our students and really intensified and really challenged our systems and structures. I know one of the things that we're struggling with right now is also behavior. That wasn't one of the priorities, but it is a priority right now. We feel like we're doing a lot of reteaching, resetting expectations literally every day. Mondays feel like a brand-new school year, every Monday. And that is not just an Urbana thing, right? I think every school district across the country is struggling with some of those concerns. Us, I think, maybe champagne a little bit more, because a significant number of our students didn't come to school last year at all. So other districts were able to provide some in-person learning. We had a very small population in our middle school and high school who actually came back in person third and fourth quarter. So it really is very intense, I would say, for our staff and for our support staff, our teachers, just with the positive expectations and really just trying to reframe and be as positive as we possibly can. So I know that's not one of the goals, but I wanted to say that because I know that has been something that we have been focusing on quite a bit since the beginning of the school year. So as we know, and this is... This information is not just for our board members, but also for the public that might be tuning in tonight. And I know our board members were part of... Several of our board members were part of the 2018 racial equity resolution that was created at the board level. And again, several of our board members here tonight are part of the committee. And I know all of our board members are really invested in equity. So some of this information is really far public. I really want them to make sure that they understand why this is important. It isn't just something that I wanna do or the board wants to do or a few people in our district are really pushing. This is something that just has to happen. So in order for us to achieve our district goals that we just discussed and to really move our strategic planning work along to... In order for us to redesign our systems, we really need to look at our systems and our structures. So as a school district, school systems are basically set up to be complex ecosystems. We know that our... The systems of power and privilege that exist in all school districts, not just Urbana School District, are routinely producing equitable outcomes for people of color while reinforcing advantages for some of our white students to our white staff. So this is just a very basic definition of educational equity. You'll find many different versions. You may have a version that really is near and dear to you, but this is the one that I'm sharing tonight. So educational equity is the recognition that barriers marginalized students faced are due often to intentional and unintentional actions and biases and therefore require us to dedicate a greater amount of resources to remove them. So we all know that these barriers exist. And as a district, it is our... It's our responsibility, whether intentionally those barriers have been put there or unintentionally, to remove them. And not just remove them, but also eradicate them with new and different resources for students. So I know this is a small visual for people viewing in the audience. They can see on the bigger screen. And hopefully, our folks looking at home can see this visual. I like this visual. It's a nice way to describe the differences between diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've talked a lot about DEI and what that really is. I know it is a buzzword right now in the educational community. So I really wanted to take just a moment to really decipher what the differences are. So that first box at the top, diversity, is the presence of differences that include race, gender, religion, sexual orientation, ethnicity, nationality, SES, language, disability. We talked about all of these as part of our work. You'll see these differences really outlined in the policy as well. Equity, I'm gonna skip, because we're gonna talk about that one a little bit more in the next slide. But inclusion, we've talked a lot about being inclusive and being... And what is the outcome of inclusion? That was a really prevalent topic at our discussions as part of the task force. And we really wanted to make sure we're not doing inclusion to kids or we're not really... You know, it isn't about just making people feel welcome. And it isn't about just creating the spaces. It really is about having intentional, inclusive outcomes for everybody. And that is the green box at the bottom. So we focused most of our conversations via the task force around the notion of equity. And many people may have seen the picture of the young people. We're gonna call them young people on the boxes at the apple tree. I'm gonna show you another picture here that even more people have seen when you describe equity. But equity is promoting justice, impartiality, fairness within the procedures, processes, and distribution of resources within systems. So basically, within our school district. Equality versus equity. A lot of people really wanna talk about equality and fairness, but we know fairness is never equal. So equality means that everyone gets the same thing, which is what's happening kind of on the left side of that picture. Everyone gets that one box to be able to reach up into the tree to get the apple. But the equity is really meaning everyone gets what they need. So no matter how many boxes you get to get to the top of that tree. But this picture is an even better visual, I think, that really goes with the... A lot of our discussions around breaking down the barriers. So again, probably everybody in this room has seen a different version of this ballgame and how it relates to equity and equity work. But I like this version because it really does lend itself to the conversation about educational equity. So the reality of our world, if you look all the way to the left, you know, as a district and talking about those systems of power at the beginning, we know that unintentionally and intentionally, there have been some systems and structures that have been put in place where some of our students get way more than they need, more so because they started off with what they needed in the first place. So the young man at the end of the line there is already a tall student. So he really doesn't need all those boxes, right, to be able to see over the fence. But as a district, in a lot of spaces, when those students arrive, we're giving them additional resources and additional supports. So they get way more than they need, whereas some of our young people who come to us, there are already huge disparities when they come. And in this visual, the young person to the farthest right is the smallest in the group, and he is already way below. And there's just a huge gap between he and his peers there. So that neck... If you go over to the next one, equality, the assumption is that everyone benefits from the same supports. So this is the notion of fairness, right? We wanna be fair. We wanna give every student the same thing. We wanna make sure that we're giving everybody the access to the same program or the same curriculum in the same way. But again, looking at the needs of the students, when you've got a student who's really tall, can already see over the fence, our student in the middle there already has his one box and he can see. But then, again, our person... Our student there on the end, the youngest and the smallest, yes, he got the same box that everyone else got, but he's still not able to participate and view the game. But equity, on the other hand, gets everybody what they need. So our taller student doesn't need the box. You can give his box to the younger student there, so they... Now they can all enjoy the game. However, what we're really wanting to do with our educational equity efforts is take down that fence. So it's never there to begin with. Why do they have to look over the fence when everyone else gets to enjoy the game from their seats and be part of the viewing stand? If we are really talking about educational equity, we don't want the supports. We want to be able to see the game without the supports, without the accommodations, because the cause of the inequity is there. So the fence just doesn't exist anymore. So that systemic barrier is removed. So just to also give a little more information about what we will then be looking at and having more conversations within the task force. And again, this is going to branch out way, way farther reaching than just our group who've been doing this work. We will be engaging our stakeholders to help us have the conversations around intentional distribution of district resources. Like, what does that look like, right? So I've included here a few examples. So anytime we're talking about resources, the first thing we talk about is money, because you know, nothing happens for... I know Carol's looking at me, but all the things that we're gonna do and all the things we're gonna talk about will involve a financial budgeting resource. Programs, our resources, curriculum, materials, additional staff, services. So some of that intentional distribution of those district resources among our schools, our students, staff, it will have to be based on what everyone needs to achieve our district goals and to realize that every school has a role to play in preparing all of our students to graduate from high school, to be ready for college, career, and community. So I know a lot of our conversations happen around, you know, the students as they get older. But we have to really, you know, we're always talking about AP and, you know, all the classes and all the courses and the things that our older students are doing. But we have to really think about... A lot of this distribution of district resources needs to happen all the way down to pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, when our kids need it the most. So if you go back and think about that picture, the younger student, the smallest student, we need to be thinking about those kids way early in their careers. And what do they need? So by the time they are sixth graders and ninth graders and 12th graders, they're reaching their fullest potential. So when the committee started our work, we were fairly early, I would say, in the pandemic. I think when we started looking at applications in December and January, I don't think we really thought we would still be talking about COVID 18 months later. So when the task force really started this work, the goal was to begin to dismantle the barriers and really look at our opportunity gaps. However, as part of really talking about remote learning and our response to 15 months of remote learning, we really have to look at our opportunities now to interrupt the inequity that really has disproportionately impacted our students of color in the last 18 months. So the interruptions to traditional learning have impacted students both academically and socially. And I probably could have added behaviorally on this slide as well. I know that's something that I mentioned at the beginning, but that has definitely been an impact that we're seeing. And our... Some of our lower-income students, our students of color, were likely to experience more and longer and more intense extended periods of disrupted learning during that time. So a lot of the equity needs that we've already been talking about at the district level, and I'd say, you know, part of our response... You can go to the next slide, John. During these last 18 months, have really been focused on these areas. We've really been making sure we're being equitable with digital access and internet accessibility and support for our English learners, really trying to find better ways to communicate from the school, from the district to homes, really trying to shore up social-emotional needs as much as we can, access to materials, mental health. We've been talking a lot about our students' social, emotional, and mental health needs. So those are areas we've already been focusing on. But again, that really isn't removing any barriers or getting rid of any opportunity gaps. Those are just our ways that we've been trying to kind of equalize things and really, really support our students the best way that we can. So moving forward, in order to ensure that all of our decisions are being made with educational equity in mind and through an equity lens, as I mentioned at the beginning, the task force started our work really framing everything through this equity policy. The process, we had several meetings. Again, as I mentioned, we kind of spent a little time learning a little bit about equity and why this work was important. And then, instead of us sitting... And I loved what Laura said when I met with her. She said, "There's a lot of words. This is a lot of words." And it's right, it was a lot of words and a lot to digest, a lot for people to really sit with and understand. So we didn't wanna get bogged down in the words as a group. You know, there were 30 of us, 30-plus of us in every one of our... And we met via Zoom, I didn't say that. But meeting via Zoom is really different. It isn't as interactive or engaging or you can't read people's faces. You can't really pick up on the body language as much. But I think as a group, we did a really fantastic job of getting a lot accomplished via Zoom. So what we did, instead of like spending hours and hours and hours arguing about the words, we really started the process by looking at some exemplar policies. We're early in our work. I know we've had a lot of racial equity work happening in the district for many, many years. But we're early in our work of creating something like this in terms of this policy. So there are a lot of other districts who've created fabulous, great policies. So we looked at some within the state of Illinois. We looked at some equity policies from other districts across the country. And we really started looking at those as kind of our exemplars that we really wanted to model our policy after. So as a group, we identified four areas of need or four areas that we wanted to focus on, rather. And those four areas were a statement of need, like, why is this very important? Why are we doing this? A vision for the policy and a vision for our work moving forward. And the commitment. What is Urbana School District committed to doing? And then we thought it was really important to define some of the language and some of the common language and terms that we included in the policy. So I'm gonna stop talking. And we have some guests from our committee who have volunteered to come and talk about the areas that they worked on the most. So because we were zooming, anybody who's been in a Zoom, when you've got 30 people and everybody's trying to talk and raising your hands and using emojis and trying to take turns, who's gonna talk when? Instead of doing that, we really used a breakout, more of a breakout room format. So all the groups kind of were assigned to breakouts. We had... We made sure that parents were in breakout rooms with administrators and teachers. And we tried to have a mix in every breakout. And we had eight different breakouts. We allowed everyone to kind of self-identify which area of the policy that they wanted to work on the most. And so a lot of our time was spent in our breakout rooms and our breakout groups, kind of crafting, writing, discussing, sharing. And then we would come back into the big group altogether to share our work and really talk about why we thought this was important and why each breakout kind of maybe included some of the things that they included. So I've invited members from the breakout groups and from the different areas of focus to come and talk tonight. So we have two people, statement of need folks. I'll let them come and introduce themselves. And we're not really, like I said, we're not gonna like read to everyone. You know, what I've asked people to do is really share their thoughts there, you know, share the big items or the big tickets or the big conversations that were had in their breakouts and what was really important to the people from the group and why they included some of the language that they included. So I will turn it over to you guys. They're gonna introduce themselves, so we know who they are behind the masks.
Good evening. So I am Shawna Sheeran. I'm the Director of Adult Education, a flag principal at Urbana Early Childhood School.
So Lori, I want John. Can we can... One of them share your mics, so they can each have one. You can hear them a little bit better, so that it doesn't have to be in the middle.
Thank you. Is that better? Great. All right. So our group was charged with drafting the statement of need. And as we came together and reviewed other policies and thought about what our priorities were, there were some things that really stood out to all of us. And that was that we really gave an honest reflection of where we are as a district, where we've been. And then also, what is our why? Why are we doing this? What's the purpose of this equity work and this equity policy? And we really wanted to... All of our group and the larger committee really agreed that we wanted to use strong language and make it very clear why we were articulating this policy, but also, you know, implementing equity work. So some of the things that really... That we spent some time talking about and really thinking through in the first few paragraphs of the statement of need, we really wanted to be inclusive and make sure we were addressing all types of inequity. However, we also all felt very strongly that racial equity was at the heart of this, that we were not watering that work down, that we were calling it exactly what it was, that we felt like racial inequities and racial disparities are at the core of the work that we need to do, without taking away from the fact that any inequity across any group of people for any child in our district, any family in our district, is unacceptable. So you can see some of the language there. We talked about persistent racial disparities and inequities. Any academic barriers of any kind, really, are completely unacceptable. We spent a long time on that word unacceptable. And it was hard to come up with a word, frankly, that we felt was strong enough. But we felt that the word unacceptable was clear, maybe not very fancy, but very clear. We also felt really strongly about the fact that we needed to acknowledge that where we are, where we were, where we've been, that we have tried different things, but that we have been unsuccessful. We didn't want to create the impression that we felt like the work that has been done to this point is sufficient. We wanted to acknowledge that there has been work done, because we think that that was important, that we acknowledged that work has been done, but that we are not where we need to be and that the work that we've done thus far really has not met the goals that we wanna meet for our students and families. So you'll see that reflected in the statement of need. And then, finally, we really wanted to make sure, again, I kind of talked about this at the beginning, but we wanted to make sure to address all students while also recognizing that there are systemic and institutional issues regard... Around race at play that we really wanted to acknowledge, that we didn't want to water that down by just saying general... Using the general term of equity or inequities. That we wanted to talk about inequities, but particularly, especially institutional racism and racial inequities.
Yeah, and I think from there, a lot of our conversation really focused on... And you spoke about this earlier, Dr. Everett Tatum, that it isn't just about access and opportunity, that we really wanted to make sure we were clear about the ways in which we need to provide all available resources and really turn the system on its head and make some real impact and changes, so it isn't about catching up or providing things that aren't there, but going beyond that. You can see, we talked about a lot of different marginalized populations, and we thought that was really important. Again, Shawna mentioned really highlighting the racial inequities, but also there are lots of populations within our but also there are lots of populations within our schools and our community that need to be highlighted. And we felt it was very important to include that very specifically here. And then we also wanted to talk and highlight towards the end of the statement of need, this, this real desire to build a community and a sense of belonging for all of our families and students that come in. And I think lastly, we wanted to make sure we understood we're talking about the whole child, the whole family, the whole community. And, and not really being narrow in our focus for our students after they leave our, our school system, but that we're preparing our students in lots of different ways for lots of different things after their time with us.
I just want to add, highlight the one sentence that I think for me in this work, one of the sentences that really stood out and that I think was really powerful for all of us in our group was the, the sentence that says, "We acknowledge the responsibility for the disparities among our young people rests with adults, not children." And that is, was really just showing that as a district, we believe that this is our responsibility. We're not going to blame children, we're not going to blame our families. This is our responsibility as the adults within this system to make the system stronger and equitable for all of our students. And so that sentence for us was, was a very powerful statement that it really requires all of us to do that work.
I think what's interesting about that statement that we spent some time talking about is, so we were three educators and a parent, I think, who have been doing a lot of work in the educational system for a very long time. And I think one of the reasons why many of us in that group are doing this work is that we recognize that the work we've done and being a part of the system has created and sustained and allowed the disparities and the inequities. And so that statement really spoke to the fact that we are a part of the problem and now need to be more a part of the solution.
Thank you Shawna and Beth. Next, they're going to hang around just in case they have questions. Thank you. The vision statement, John is actually going to share on behalf of the two vision breakouts. A lot of people had other commitments and things tonight and we couldn't get anybody else. Not that, not that we don't, we're not happy to have John, but we really wanted a parent or a teacher to share. So John volunteered, but we didn't have any other people available, so.
So Devin, sorry, I'll come back over here so I can drive at the same time. But a few focuses on the vision that I'd kind of like to highlight. I'm not going to read it aloud for you, but it's there on the screen. And so the focus of what we're really looking at, I think the need statement was looking a lot at where we've been and kind of what we have, why we need to be doing this work. The vision, I think we were focused on where we're going and what we can do for the district to overcome the inequities in the district and in the educational systems in general that we have. So as you look here, focus really on paths forward and making education accessible toward everybody. And on the second portion of this, we talked a great deal about whether or not we wanted to include a list. And in the end, we kind of decided that it was important to specifically name some people so that we could be really targeted and intentional about this work, while still acknowledging that this list is not exhaustive and that there's a lot more people affected by this, these social and educational inequities than just this list. But moving forward, hoping to leverage the work of this committee and what we're doing to overcome those inequities and paths to move forward out of that.
Thank you, John. So next is the commitment. We have actually three groups working on our commitment statements. So I know Nate's here to share. Rachel, a parent, is also in the Zoom and she was part of the commitment group as well. So Rachel, if you, Nate's going to start us off and then if you want to add anything, you're welcome to, to kind of pop in and John will, John will have you up on the screen there, but. All right, Nate.
Okay, I'm Nate Wall, known more appropriately within this space as Mr. Nate. I am a Washington preschool, Lilo Elementary School, Urbana Middle School, Urbana High School, class 2007 graduate. I'm also a parent of two juniors at the high school. And I currently work as one of the restorative practices facilitators at the Urbana Middle School. So my commitment to Urbana, to the students of Urbana, to the families of Urbana, and to creating spaces and policies that reflect the needs of those who they're created for is pretty deep and extremely personal. And it was essential to the group that when composing this equity commitment, that it was reflective of the needs of all of our USD 116 students and their families. All students deserve our best and with that in mind, our commitment outlines specific action steps that will be carried out, that, that will carry out that commitment, rather. Students must be supported and provided rigorous curriculum that is reflective of the needs of and represents all students. For students to feel represented, it is necessary for the staff of USD 116 to represent the student population that they serve. Students struggle to be what they cannot see. Having teachers who reflect the student population is not enough to ensure equitable support for students. What is equally important for students is that teachers are provided professional development based on their individual needs, because that too is equitable. It's equitable for the students and it's equitable for the staff. Resources must be provided to students and staff based on their individual needs and their varying strengths. We are, we are very much aware that reimagining what support looks like is not an easy task. But the work will be very much worth the reward. And an extremely important component of our commitment is that, is that of the one of dismantling practices that relate to discipline policies that historically target specific student populations, specifically students of color. We are committed to strengthening our partnerships with all families, especially families that have been underrepresented in the past, families of color. This is, this is a necessary commitment if equity is our aim, which of course it is. Previously described, there are many of our commitments, but not our commitments in their entirety. As it is realistic to acknowledge, our commitments may change as the needs of our students evolve. Working as a collective to draft these commitments was a joy. It always comes with great benefit to collaborate on important issues with a group of diverse people and diverse experiences. The group who worked to compose the commitments section of this policy reflected parents, teachers, administrators, and parents, teachers and administrators, who are parents and teachers. Together, we drafted a list of commitments that we believe are commitments that will make for a better and more equitable Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Rachel, do you want to add?
No. Thank you, Nate, for representing your group.
Okay. My best. Thank you.
All right. And last but not least, we'll invite Sheri, a kindergarten teacher at Dr. Williams. And she's going to kind of walk us through our discussions around the definitions and why this section was important.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Dr. Williams. I'm the dual language teacher there. So our group was tasked with coming up with definitions. So what we did was we looked through the document and looked for any terms that might be confusing to the reader and found definitions that we felt fit. So then with the definitions that we had, we kind of reflected and took a closer look at the definitions. And that's why this, the definition portion is so important because it allows us to reflect and be more intentional. So one of the terms that we kind of reflected on was culturally responsive teaching. This is because we tend to think in terms of responsive teaching and we forget the cultural aspect. And with classrooms becoming more and more diverse each year, students might, students who might strive under different conditions aren't. Another term that we looked at was opportunity gap. We reflected on this term. This is because we tend to think more in terms of, or we use the more commonly, the more common term, which is achievement gap, which are academic disparities in lower income students. But we, but the term opportunity gap better defines the fact that in the US, race and ethnicity also determines opportunities in life. We also wanted to let the board know that there will be a companion document that is still in the process of being created of additional definitions related to racial equity that are not necessarily in the policy, with the rationale being that one of our goals is to normalize conversations about race. And in order to meet this goal, we need to make sure that we have a shared understanding of commonly held definitions of institutional or systemic racism and structural racism. And normalizing and prioritizing conversations will make or create a sense of urgency, allowing change to take place hopefully more exponentially, or exponentially. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheri. Okay, so I'm going to invite Dr. Kathy, our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Our, been with us now just a few weeks, but has jumped right in in lots of different areas. So next steps for the task force. So as I mentioned earlier, this is just the beginning of our work, right? The policy, we'll talk in the next slide about how we're going to share that policy out and make sure that it doesn't just, you know, sit on a, in a piece of paper in a binder or in our policy document on our website, but that we really make it a living, breathing document within our community. But before we talk about that, I wanted, Dr. Kathy has had some experience with this next topic in, John, yeah. So one of our next tasks, as well as next steps, is we're going to be talking about an equity assessment audit to really help us identify the populations and processes that need our attention the most. So where are there gaps? Where is there greater equity already in the district? And really focus our efforts in that assessment audit on our historically underserved and underrepresented groups. So we'll let Dr. Kathy share a little bit about the auditing process as the next step.
All right. Good evening. Again, my name is Dr. Brandon Kathy. I have the pleasure of serving as the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. It has been said that of all our studies, history is best qualified to warrant our research. In this sense, our immediate next step in our equity journey will involve the task force taking an in-depth look at the Equity Audit and Climate Report commissioned by the Urbana Board of Education in 1998 and completed by Doctors JQ Adams and Lance Turnasty of Western Illinois University. Doctors Adams and Turnasty produced a detailed audit that explored several themes, including civil rights, achievement scores, suspension data, special education services, community involvement, and much more. A review of the various themes and recommendations from the previous audit is essential for those of us that were not affiliated with USD 116 at that time and lack the foundational knowledge of what has transpired in the district since the audit was completed. An examination of this historical document, coupled with the current data garnered from our new data dashboard, will help better inform the task force and stakeholders as we begin the strategic planning process in the coming months. As we prepare to begin the strategic planning process, an essential step will also include analyzing the pros and cons of conducting a new internal equity audit or an external one. In our assessment of the best process to utilize, we will meet with potential external consultants. In doing so, we will examine the following factors in alignment with our identified district needs and expectations. One, the structure and components of the audit process and the theoretical foundation of which their research is based upon. Two, the duration of the process, be it weeks, months, a year or longer. Number three, how many other public school districts have utilized their specific audit process? Four, the anticipated financial investment. And five, the outcomes and/or final report produced by the consultant. The task force will then make a recommendation to conduct either an internal or external audit with an emphasis of emerging from the preferred process with intentional action items or an equity action plan. The action items or equity action plan would include specific yearly measurable goals that we can align to this proposed equity policy and the forthcoming strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Kathy. At our last discussion, it was kind of the, I would say, the desire of the group to really make sure that we're going to do this correctly and really, we talked about the benefits a little bit, some of the pros and cons of an external and an internal audit. From my perspective, I, external audits take a lot of time, as Dr. Kathy said, weeks, months. In, in, in order to do it well, it'll probably be a year to eighteen months before we get it completed. I am very anxious to start some strategic planning engagements and strategic planning work. However, I really feel like the Equity Implementation Plan that Dr. Kathy mentioned is also really critical. So what I'm hoping is, as, as we kind of start in our next meeting, we're going to talk a little bit more in depth about this process and what it involves to do the external audit. But what I'm hoping is that we'll kind of be able to do a little bit of a hybrid here. So we'll be able to, yes, really dig deep into this external audit, but that hopefully there's some overarching themes, some things that really bubble up in the next few months where we can really grab a hold of those and actually start some strategic planning engagements in the spring. So we're not waiting another eighteen months to really be able to, to get into a strategic plan. It really makes sense to do the Equity Implementation Plan first because everything that we are going to talk about related to strategic planning is, is going to tie back to those equity goals and those equity action steps, whether it's money, staff, buildings, facilities, you know, whatever programs, curriculum, whatever we're going to be doing is really, or whatever we're going to be talking about related to strategic plans for, you know, what Urbana School District is going to look like in five years to three to five years or however long we end up crafting a plan for is really going to have to be undergirded by our equity goals and action steps. So I think the audit is extremely important. So I really want us to, you know, we're going to get started in that first. But I'm hoping that it's not, we're not sitting here a year from now and not have, had an opportunity to really start talking about some of the strategic planning work. So my, my hope is that by springtime, Dr. Kathy and I have talked about maybe by March, that we at least are able to pull some, some pieces from whatever we end up doing externally and at least get our efforts going to pull together a strategic planning, a large group of stakeholders to start looking at those so we can really start that process, so. And last but not least, so next steps for the policy. So tonight is the first read. So again, I know you've had a few days to sit with it. It, we will be sharing it out in the community as much as we can. Hopefully, we'll get your feedback tonight if there are areas that we need to tweak or discussions that you would like, the members of the task force that are here and several, you know, a couple of our board members here who are part of the group, that we can take back to the task force. We can do that. We're hoping to get approval from the board at our next meeting on October 19th, just to kind of keep the, the work moving forward. We of course want to share the policy. We want it to be a living, breathing document that we refer to often. You know, often we write mission statements and vision statements and they kind of sit somewhere and they're, they're not a part of the ongoing day-to-day work in the district. So we don't want this policy So we don't want this policy to, to become that. So we really want to get it out to as many stakeholders as we possibly can. Sharing it with our principals, having our principal leaders really share it with their faculty and their staff. Having it be something that we share with our school improvement team members. So when they're looking at their school improvement goals, that the, the policy and the work of the, and the language and the, the vision and the commitments are also a part of the school improvement goals. We'll work with Mrs. Webster and a lot of her upcoming engagements. She has family forums, the Parent Academy events scheduled where we can share the policy. I'll work with principals to make sure that we can share it via PTA, PTO, PTSA meetings. We want to get it in front of the, some of our students. Dr. Kathy is already working with some student groups, so we, we have some student groups that we can engage. Specifically, we really want to tap into the minority, the MEP person, the Minority Enrichment Office, where they work with several clubs, our African American Club, or Latino Club, or Asian American Club, other curriculum clubs, Student Senate, like all these other spaces where we could give the policy to some of our young people. We actually have some elementary mentor groups that are starting across the district as well. That would be some other small group elementary spaces where we could get younger voices around some of the language in the policy as well as some focus groups. That, oh, last but not least, before questions, I definitely want to make sure we put up all the participants who gave hours and hours and hours of their time to the process. So we have some parents, I'm not going to read everybody's names, but with Catherine will be sharing this presentation as part of the board update. So if you know someone there, send them an email and just say, thank you for your time, thank you for your work. Our teachers are there, and then that last slide is, is some of our building leaders and our district administrators that were also part of the committee. So I'll stop and we will take questions or comments from the board.
And board members or their comments or questions?
Yeah, I just had something that I just kind of thought of right now as you were talking. I am sure many of our families listening might be feeling like they didn't realize there was an equity task force. Will there be another round or a call out to join at this point? Or is that no longer a possibility? I'm just, I've heard a few requests, so I just wanted to maybe speak to that.
So at this time, because we've been working together for seven, eight months, kind of trying to, you know, incorporate new members at this point, I feel we'll slow the process down a little bit. There are going to be other opportunities, as I mentioned. Focus group opportunities, as we start creating some of those action plans and action steps. I will be kind of far reaching out and asking for volunteers. We actually have several people who applied to be part of the task force that were not, we were trying to keep the group intentionally at a certain number so we could keep the work moving and keep the conversations happening. So we, I still have all the people who applied in the very first round, and I'm going to reach back out to all of them when we get to that point too. So we can still engage them in part of the process as well when we, when we get to a point where we have some real actionable steps that we can include more voices, so.
Great, thanks. Yeah, and a couple of things that we, I was thinking about prior to this meeting. I think something that a lot of us are kind of wanting to support and what, what happens next is addressing the levels of community violence and just, and this is an opportunity to speak to that with that as we work in the equity realm. So I, I don't know if so much is, it's a question, as it is more just, I want to make sure that we're, that's, has some equal weight in the room when we're discussing how we roll out these like assessments or goals as we continue to, you know, work with and grow with our community population and kind of what we're seeing as, as the needs shift. So just mindfulness to, to that. And I think when, just to speak to the auditing options, I look forward to learning more about what the task force thinks. But I would also just, I guess, be weary of asking our staff and administrators to possibly be doing more on top of what they're already doing when assessing an external or internal audit, while keeping obviously, you know, in mind the timeframe. Or if there's a way it can be tiered in such a fashion that we receive information at, in intervals, as opposed to maybe one large chunk that would allow us to continue, I don't know, to use that as we think about strategic planning. So, yeah, I kind of look forward to hearing what other people think, but I do want to be mindful of what we're asking our staff to do.
And we talked about that at our last discussion. That's why most of the, I would say, we didn't have every single member in our last meeting, we were missing a few people. But the consensus of the group was that we are all feeling like we're wearing multiple hats right now. And, and I think a lot of us are in spaces where we feel like we can't do one more thing, which is why we were, and we're all doing things that we never thought we'd be doing during COVID. I think this is something else we're all experiencing. So that was a big factor in why we're really leaning toward the external piece. Because then, you know, someone else can be kind of doing that data digging and, and working alongside us, but coming back to us regularly, like you said, and, and working with them. So we'll have like a, you know, Dr. Kathy will likely be the point person that that person will work with, or that group, or that firm, or whatever we decide, wherever we decide to go with that. And then, you know, he will then work with the task force and will bring those things back to the board level, so.
Thank you, and please bear with my list. I wrote down the stuff that I had asked last Friday, but then I had a couple of extra things to add on. First of all, thank you so much to all the presenters. This is really great. I was excited to hear about it last week and I'm even more excited now. So much work that you guys have done and it looks like it's taking shape. So one of the things that really surprised me that Dr. Kathy said last week, and then again tonight, was when we last had our audit was in 1998, and I was shocked by that. And I said, my goodness, you know, that's like, my oldest was born in 1998 and he is now a full-fledged adult out of college and everything, so that's a long time. And Dr. Kathy's response to me was, well, there's plenty of districts in this state who've never done it. And so we're actually ahead of the curve, which shocked me even more, so it's long overdue. Thank you for doing it. The things that I just had to point out because words and editing, it's just kind of, it was what stood out to me when I was reading it. I think this is a great document. And I noticed that the, the PDF that we've got here, the presentation, is slightly different from the Word document or the Google doc that I looked at last week. And I think that this one still, it needs to be updated because one of the things I tripped on last week when I was reading it was, let me scroll back up. So in the Statement of Need, page two, it was on the, on the document that I see was edited recently. The word in the first sentence, "We have identified the following patterns," that phrase has been taken out because to me it kind of jarred my mind when I was saying, we've identified patterns, but then the bulleted list goes into affirmations of commitment, which they're wonderful. And I'm glad that it was removed in the previous statement, so I just hope they're reconciled. Because as you guys explained to me last Friday, well, the patterns are things that we're going to be dealing with later after we do more digging and find out where these patterns lie. But right now, we're just expressing our commitment, so thank you for that. A second thing I wanted to ask, if we could include or somehow wrap it in to the vision statement on the second page of vision where there's the bulleted list about the groups of people who will be addressed with this was, where foster status hit, it, it made me wonder about, well, what about kids with other living situations, not necessarily familial? It could be just, I don't know what the word is, habitational, home situation, what was the other word? Housing status, I mean, that's another group of kids who are extremely marginalized and have lots of barriers. So I would like this to address anybody who's in a homeless situation or in a foster situation or just in a non-traditional familial situation. I want to make sure that they're addressed with that. And then lastly, with the definitions, this is one that I actually had to look up because I've heard the terms institutional racism, systemic and systematic, all used jumbled together. And if I was confused over it, I'm sure there's probably a few other people who are, just the definitions, the difference between systemic and systematic was what I had to look up because I was like, well, wait a minute, they're not interchangeable. One is baked in and one is just applied consistently across the board, whatever is already baked in. So if there's a way we could kind of address that in the definitions, it was, it would be helpful to me. So maybe other people seeing it would find it helpful because that's like part of the reason why we want to dismantle it. If we don't know what the difference between systematic and systemic is, we need to know how we're applying it, you know, anyways. Those are my, I think those are my major comments. But to go along with the recommendation, I mean, I know this is the first read and we're going to be talking about this a lot more, but it, it sounds to me like also an external thing is something, it sounds like there's a lot of benefits to that because, one, we don't want to do this in a hurry. We want to take our time over it and be deliberate. And if it takes a year, it takes 18 months to do it right, that's what I would love to see. I don't want to rush through it. And I agree with you, I think that it will fill in components on its own, along with strategic, strategic planning as we go along. But Dr. Kathy is in the perfect position to be able to identify who we can work with. And since he's coming here from outside of Urbana, he's got a fresh set of eyes and fresh ideas. And I would hope that an external audit would also bring fresh eyes and fresh ideas so that it's not operating in a vacuum. And it speaks to what Laura said about adding extra burden to our own staff. If we gave it to somebody outside, that would be their sole focus, and I would love to be able to dig deep with them. So again, sorry to be long-winded, but I really am grateful that this is coming to us now. It's like a really great shot of enthusiasm and, you know, optimism in a dark year that we've had. So thanks for moving it forward.
Board members, any other comments or questions? All right, so I guess we've been forming the processes for a menu document, possibly.
Yeah, well, we have, our next meeting is the 21st. I want to say October 21st, and that is after the task force meeting. So what we'll do is, if, I know Brian, you had a couple of comments you put in that I haven't had a chance to make all those comments yet, and I'll add a couple of the things that we've had. So I'll add those, I'll share them out via email with the committee. So, you know, we're not, it's not, you know, later we'll be kind of changing things, I'll share that. I will probably get feedback via email, since we don't meet until the 21st. And then we can bring your revised with these tweets on the 19th, hopefully for a, an approval.
I'm sorry, I do have one more question.
Sure.
I do want to make a point to say that I hope the next time we hear that we do, I would love to hear some of the student feedback.
Yes.
While we're, so if it's still a living and working document, I, I do think that piece is actually one of the stronger parts that we need to still hear from. So whatever, as much as all of the student feedback regarding this document as it stands.
I don't know that we'll, we can try, it's on between now and the 19th, I don't know if we'll be able to do that. But, but yes, definitely as we continue through the process, we'll make sure the student voice is included, but yes.
There's no further comments? Thank you everybody for presenting tonight and for working with me. It has been a wonderful experience these past seven, eight, nine months. I've learned a lot. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight, and I know it's been a late night, so we appreciate it.
Our first administrative report tonight is on the Hope Springs Agreement from Linda Gibbons.
Can you pull the, a little bit closer to, yeah, right, yeah. That blower is. Hey Lori? I'm just going to see if she could turn the blower off. Okay, go ahead, Lila.
I don't know.
Oh, not Lori Britt, sorry.
It is Lori Britt, sorry, it's wrong last name.
Hold on just a little bit, Lori.
Lori, we'll be right with you. So tonight I'm just going to talk with you about the Hope Springs Memorandum of Understanding. And it will come before you tonight and then vote next meeting, Dr. Kathy, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so the memorandum is between Hope Springs, which is a counseling facility in Champaign and Urbana School District. Hope Springs is a part of Cunningham Children's Home. So the memorandum starts out by giving you a bit of background and purpose for the agreement. Talks about just the need to bring, you know, students, the helpfulness of bringing students' mental health in line with achievement. And working together as partners, how important that is to, in our, in our school district and community. So Hope Springs Services, they then line out the services a bit. They talk about services being a licensed mental health clinician, so we know that this person is licensed, experienced and very informed in mental health. They train their staff, and then their services will take place in our schools when available. But there is a clause that has been added from COVID because they, they have the option of doing Zoom meetings as counseling sessions if they need to. They can also meet at Hope Springs right now. They do not have a counselor that can come into the school. So we're inviting anyone that we're referring to Hope Springs. And then the USD side of, of the agreement talks about referred, us referring families and students to Hope Springs. And of course, that is something that we do by presenting that as an option to our families. And then families get to decide whether they want to take advantage of this or not. So we don't refer unless the family is involved and wants to commit to doing this. So the responsibilities of the district are to provide space for the services. We find a room, an office, someplace where the counselor and the student can meet. We present families with lots of options. The Hope Springs is one of them. We also had, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we have our clinical professionals in our buildings, our social workers who are also engaging with our students. So we present options. We obtain proper consents from everyone involved. That's our side of the consent and also the Hope Springs side of it, to make sure that we can communicate, we can fax the referral information to Hope Springs without any, any concerns. We also have, communicate frequently. We meet every month, and I meet quarterly also with, with the director. And then the counselors can meet by week, by month, so every two weeks. Hope Springs responsibilities are to process the referrals in a timely fashion, I think it says two days. Assist families in applying for public funding, so funding benefits. So if they are struggling with how to, what kind of insurance they have, or how to do their Medicaid or whatever, Hope Springs will help them and advise them. They also ensure proper consents are signed and complete an assessment once the student comes into the agency. The first thing they do is an assessment and to determine a treatment plan. And they also will link to any other needed resources. Like say, if there's a substance abuse issue, they may refer to Rosecrans. So the, the final portion of the document is just talking about confidentiality and security. Mentions HIPAA, FERPA, ISSRA. That's on both sides for us to agree to. They talk about reporting in the memorandum, funding, there is no commitment from us to pay for any services. And that's stated in the memorandum. And indemnification, that we're not holding each other responsible for anything that occurs during this situation. There's no hold harmless. And then finally, duration of the agreement is for one year. So I do want to add that. So I do want to add that this is a tier three intervention. That our social workers and our clinical professionals will be the ones that determine and talk with the family about this possible referral. Um, and they will follow it too and talk with the clinicians at Hope Springs. So it is tier three. Um, you know, as mentioned a few weeks ago, we talked about the impact of COVID. We're still not sure, um, what Dr. Everett Tatum talked about with behavior and those uh, areas in the schools. We know those are indicators that we can really use these systems and um, agreements right now with the social services and mental health services in the community. Um, and finally, anyone that is working in the schools will be fingerprinted and background checked before they come into our buildings. So that's all for Hope Springs. Does anybody have any questions about that agreement?
Board members? Thank you very much, Linda.
Sure. And next, I think we have Lori Britt.
And next is Lori Britt. And what we're bringing, as Linda mentioned, the Hope Springs back after we were approved with the October 19th meeting.
So our, and our next administrative report is on the Youth Assessment Center Operations Agreement, uh, from Lori Britt.
So at our um, last meeting, Lori was having some technical difficulties and wasn't able to join in the Zoom. And so tonight we're actually approving the um, youth assessment agreement. But I know there may have been some questions that um, we really wanted Lori to um, have an opportunity to answer directly. If the board members had um, specific questions. And then Lori, um, I don't know if you just want to share a really brief overview since you didn't get to do that last time um, with the board about the Youth Assessment Center.
Yes, I can do that. Um, so do I need to turn my video on or is?
Yes, that would be.
I'm, okay, I don't, I'm trying to figure out why it's not on and my light is lit up at the top of my laptop, but I don't know why my screen is black. I apologize. Um, I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on with my video, but if you all can hear me fine.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so the Youth Assessment Center um, is, has been uh, operating since September of 2013. And um, the, the mission and purpose of the Youth Assessment Center is to serve youth between the ages of 10 to 17 years old. Um, and we work with youth that had uh, any kind of behavioral issues, police contacts. Um, anything that, you know, even a community referral or a school referral with any kind of delinquent activities or behavioral issues. Um, and basically the, the whole point is restorative justice. And so we're trying to repair the harm caused by criminal behavior. We're trying to um, link these youths up, up with resources and restorative services. So that we can, before it gets to the adjudication or the court level, we can divert the youth from uh, going that route. So we would link them up with the case manager. We would uh, complete a YAZI, which is a youth assessment screening instrument, um, that we assess risk level. And from there, we get them referred out to services. Um, we have some MOUs with some of our stakeholders in the community. Um, and so through that relationship, we're able to get them directly linked. And they work with us anywhere from two to four months. Um, for those police referrals, we have a, what we call a station adjustment, which is a lower tier from being on probation. And on a station adjustment, they have to again, meet with their case manager on a weekly basis. Um, we can have them participate in community service projects or um, even write community papers to the, the, uh, crime that they committed. If it's somewhere that was related to theft or robbery or anything like that, they would reach out to those, those agencies and write an apology letter. Um, and again, we'd link them up with any services that we feel they may need that is causing a barrier or potential risks to the behavior that we're seeing through the illegal uh, behaviors that they're indicating in. And so this is something that we really, we really, really, really want to stress in the community with the high sensitivity and the issues that we're seeing. Um, and the increase in our referrals from the police department. We really want to step in and uh, assist the youth and then, and try to repair them and get them back restored. So that they don't have to go through a criminal justice system. Um, and so more recently, we are trying to get into the schools. Um, we are trying to work with Unit Four as well as Urbana to get into the school systems and do onsite intakes. Um, with guardians, of course, with guardian approval. And they would do an onsite referral form for them and they could link them up as well and work with the student in the school as well as out of school to again, repair that behavior.
Hey, thank you Lori for that overview.
You're welcome.
The board members have any questions for Lori or about the agreement in general? Might be prepared to vote on this when uh.
I have one quick question and I don't know if Lori can answer it or um, anybody here is familiar with it. But when it, when a student is referred to the Youth Assessment Center, is it done by a school staff member, the SRO, um, one of the counselors? I mean, who, who does the referring in general to get them hooked up?
Any people? I would.
So they, that, when they talked before, and this is probably last year, I think, they said any of them could refer, but the SRO was able to bump them up to the first that was at need so they can get them.
Yeah, so any of our support people, I know we've already had a couple of referrals, right Linda? Um, from the beginning of the year, so um, you know, an administrator, one of our clinical professionals, I think anybody.
I mean, do, do we keep, keep metrics and on, on all that? Oh yeah, and then the referrals and who gives them and, and all that.
Who uh, makes the referral? I'm sure the, Lori, do you, is that part of your intake form, like who made the referral?
Yes, on the intake form, it indicates who the referral source is. And so we, we keep track of that on our end as well as for the purposes of reporting to our grant. So we have a metric system in-house as well.
All right, any other questions? Right, this is an action item tonight.
Thank you Lori.
Our last, our last administrative report is uh, demonstration of the Five Labs Data Dashboard, so from John Bootsmuth.
Yeah, Ben, I wanted to give you guys a uh, brief overview uh, before we jump into the demo. Uh, we as a district are blessed with a wealth of data, but unfortunately so much of it is siloed in kind of different areas. And it's hard to effectively utilize, especially as we begin the uh, very important equity work uh, going forward. Uh, this is something that we really want to leverage to be able to uh, utilize and make good uh, decision-making decisions. Uh, so uh, to that end, we've uh, worked with Five Labs uh, to start the onboarding process, to uh, build that as our data dashboard. This is gonna pull primarily from Skyward, uh, but also from uh, discipline data, map data, uh, all the other kind of inputs that we have. Uh, we've been working with them and we're just at the precipice of uh, being able to start utilizing this hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Uh, so the next time we talk to you all, uh, we should have some uh, really robust district data that we can start to talk about. Uh, and it's really great to leverage and drill down into uh, specific scenarios and uh, specific things that we can uh, focus on and target. As we uh, target our resources, as we start to work towards uh, all of the things in the strategic plan moving forward. So I'm not going to talk too much. Uh, I see Adam is online and I'm going to pop him up here.
While John's doing that, I was just going to add, um, we have been part of kind of the Five Lab family for a few years. Um, if people are wondering, how did we end up with Five Labs? Um, in our district, we've utilized five maps. Uh, it is a mapping, uh, kind of a student enrollment database system um, for a few years where um, we can kind of make some decisions based on where our students live. And all of that information is pulled out of um, Skyward and out of SIS, the Student Information System. And Carol, we used to use the Five Site, correct? Is that the other one? So there, there kind of is a family of um, new frontline, the company. So since we've already had a relationship, um, going in the direction of using Five Labs uh, just makes sense since we're already using some of their other products.
So Adam, go ahead.
All right, and uh, pleasure to see everybody here uh, this evening. Uh, thanks for that great introduction. And again, I'm uh, Adam Sobolka from Forecast Five and I serve as the district's advisor. And uh, as uh, was mentioned, uh, Five Lab is uh, a dashboarding system. Uh, that will allow the district to uh, provide the leaders uh, with information around a variety of topics. Uh, and data sources, uh, kind of uh, as you can see on the screen, from those that uh, come from within the student information system around attendance. And discipline and grades, uh, all the way down to uh, things like college career readiness and SAT, ACT scores, AP exams, math. Um, and so on and so forth. And uh, we're going to kind of take a tour through how the tool works to show how both at the district and the building level. Uh, you can have dashboards uh, that allow you to spend and the teams to spend time uh, using the information and less time crunching the information. Uh, as John had mentioned, we will uh, integrate with uh, the Skyward system. And produce uh, interactive dashboards, uh, like you see on the screen here as an example. And that's what I'm going to do here tonight is briefly just kind of show you the functionality of the tool. And as was mentioned, uh, we are in the process of releasing those uh, dashboards in the next few weeks here. Um, so really excited about that. Uh, but through these uh, dashboards, you have a standard page that will run uh, metrics like chronically absent uh, status for students. So um, you can see at a district level across all campuses, uh, the percent of students that are chronically absent. Um, as well as some counts related to that. And really most importantly, and what you'll see as a common theme throughout all of our dashboards is a disaggregation. You know, that focus that we want to support all students. And again, these pieces of information might live in a, somebody's office within the district. But because it's automated, we're able to run the, the metrics uh, as of the prior night. So in the morning, it is fresh for both the district and the building level teams. Across all grade levels and uh, student demographics and uh. The nice thing about our guided analysis pages is of course, at the district level, this is a, a graphic that might be interesting to see. But then at the building level, the principal can simply click on their building. And now we have a view into that particular site. Uh, and the disaggregation of chronic absenteeism at that particular location. You know, is it a particular student group that we need to engage? Uh, such as our English learners, um, or students with an IEP and so on. Now, if we see a group of students that we need to support that are struggling getting to class, uh, we can simply just click, well, who are those students? And then we can click on the chronically absent percentage at the top. And you're given the list of students with an IEP that are uh, less than 90% coming to school. Now, I should mention, I am in a demonstration mode. So all of this is obfuscated student data, not actual names. Uh, and um, just wanted to point that out there. Attendance has been critical, obviously, starting the year, but then also is grades. Um, we do sync again with uh, your student information system. So each morning, uh, as was mentioned, the principal of a particular high school uh, can dive into their building. And in fact, they can get this grade report on a, the frequency of their choice. So as you can see, this is just a semester one high school example. Uh, that shows the disaggregation within the grading period of, you know, what percent of As through Fs are across my grades. Across my student groups. And across my departments. And they're able to bookmark this and actually ha- have this email to them at the frequency of their choice. So it can come every morning to them, once a week, every two weeks or, or once a month. So they can have a live look in this student performance in the classroom. And they have this, again, because of the guided analysis feature, I'm going to speed down to the bottom here. Uh, they'll be able to dive into a particular department. So now we're at the high school, Henry Gunn High School, math department. Just speed down to the bottom. And again, at a glance, they can see what is the uh, pass rate uh, across all courses and across all staff members within that department. So no longer they have to ask uh, the department head or, or any, engage another uh, department. It just comes right to their uh, doorstep. They can drill into a particular course. There might be a high percentage of Fs at the moment. You can actually get to that student list as I showed before. To see which students might have a failing grade. And they can quickly get to this list. Again, this is obfuscated demo mode, but uh, if you were to count my clicks, that was about four clicks to get to a critical list of students to support. And that's really what we're trying to do is minimize the data crunching, get to that critical list of students so we can ensure all students are successful. All right, one of the other elements um, that we have seen in the moment in terms of benchmarking students and tracking growth. And uh, I'm sure this will be a critical visual uh, for the district. Um, in terms of uh, benchmarking tools like NWEA MAP. Where um, you know, at the individual student level, you might be able to see uh, what NWEA provides. Is if the student is um, as in green, based on their prior assessment results, a high achievement, high growth student. A high achievement, low growth student. A low achievement, low growth student. Or a low achievement, high growth student. Now, NWEA provides this at the student level and in the student report. But what it doesn't do is aggregate it at the district level. So the district can see, well, if we take out an administration window, let's just say, in this case, uh, for the demonstration purposes, uh, winter to spring growth. You know, the, your district may want to see fall to fall growth. Uh, how many students fall into each one of those four quadrants? Each one of the dots uh, on the graph is as an individual student. Uh, or you might want to, from an inter- intervention standpoint, um, see how many students with, I'll just go back to students with an IEP. How does that quadrant change for them? And who are the students that might be uh, falling into the low achievement, low growth uh, list? That we may need some additional time, resources and support to ensure that they stay on path uh, here as we get into uh, the, the winter season. Just going to go over a couple more uh, examples. Again, I will say probably in this moment in time, uh, one of the uh, the biggest draws that we have are some of the early warning indicators that we have. Uh, these are district-specific where we can work with the district team to create an early warning indicator. Based on um, multiple measures here. And uh, this district created one based off the work of the University of Chicago and some work on California, LA Unified. And just really, uh, if you look at the criteria above, assigning a point value based on the attendance rate. Of the student. How many Ds or Fs the student has? And then based on the total points, what's the risk? A level of the child. Again, these are all early warning indicators. So um, I'm going to drill down to a particular school again. And you get to see the disaggregation. That, that's really where we want to focus uh, our efforts is to make sure that if there are uh, pockets of students that are not meeting with success, we can intervene right away. You can see it broken down by attendance risk or academic risk. But I'll tell you, the principles go right to who are my high-risk students, uh, based on this criteria specific to the district. And want to get to that critical list. So you can kind of see that theme of um, creating a measure. So you can kind of see that theme of creating a measure and monitoring that measure, but then ultimately getting, giving those at the building level the tools that they need to not have to run the numbers, but access that list of students to support. Just going to show one other example. You know, we showed a lot on academic performance. But one of the other nice things that we can do in Five Lab is track some items related to involvement in co-curriculars or the gathering of things like industry credentials related to, you know, what are workplace experiences students are are having in the moment. So we can track it over time and show, obviously, a prepare the preparation of students for college, career, and beyond. Again, this is the activities item where you can see it broken down by building. This is club, other assigned co-curricular sports by grade level. And then the breakdown by student demographic. By activity, quite a few here. Now, one of the interesting things we've seen as a bounce back from the COVID year is we know the sense of belonging that can occur by a student engaging in a club or activity and wanting to just get to that list of students that are not in a co-curricular, and we'll click on that bar and get to that list of students really quickly. You know, the district is making reach out efforts to engage them in a club, a sport, or some other after-school activity because we know the trusted adult is so important in crafting their journey and helping them feel connected to, you know, in some cases, where it's their first time back in person in some time. And then, of course, the last thing I'll tackle is we do have standard views related to longitudinal reports over time with things like SAT or any or IAR or any of the state assessments. We do track that and show you performance over time. In this case, this is an SAT example based on the score ranges and then also a gap analysis that occurs, which is based on the various student groups and their scores as they relate to the whole. But again, just to lay out some some next steps. As John had mentioned, we are in process of doing some data validation within the district and connecting to the Skyward SIS. And really excited about the opportunity for the partnership.
Yeah, and one more important thing to mention. I think if you noticed, he's been kind of jumping between the two things. So there's some dashboards where there's information that you kind of receive on a regular basis. That kind of are things that you can track long term. And that's going to be something that's really important for building administrators and a lot of our staff to use. And then the other one is the guided analysis. And those are the ones where you can kind of drill down. You can do some scenarios if you have some stuff that you want to tie into your equity work or tie into discipline issues that you're saying at one school or another. It's really going to be easy to kind of do those independent things aside from the kind of daily operations. And one other thing I'll say, I think we've been doing a great job as a district over the past year and couple of years of getting a lot of these different puzzle pieces and bringing those online with the socio-emotional assessments, the MAP assessments, a lot of the other things that we're doing independently. This I kind of feel like is putting the whole puzzle together where you can take all the puzzle pieces and you can start to see how they interact with each other and to start to make some real world connections and make some goals of what you can do to move those move those things forward. So I'm really excited about this. If you have any questions for Adam or myself, I'd be happy for those. Have board members, any questions? Brian?
Just a quick question in terms of access. So at what level is this available? So who can get in here and how far down does it go? You know, I assume from central administration, but how far down into the buildings?
Sure, there's granular access. So not everybody's going to have access to everything. Probably we would set up the access, but probably building administrators, principals would have access to their building data. And if there's things where people have questions that need to interact with other buildings or other student data, we would be able to probably help them with that from the central office level. I think to get to the crux of your question, not every first grade teacher is going to be able to see all of the district data for all of the students across the district. And that's the same in Skyward and everything else. We take our purpos responsibilities seriously.
I just had a question about training and are staff being trained to navigate the dashboard? I guess, how does that, how does that work for those who need to know?
Yep. And once it's set up, Adam can talk a little bit more about that. There'll be some training from frontline. And I know if people aren't able to come to one of the kind of guided trainings, there's some online trainings, but I'll let Adam talk a little bit more about that as well.
Yeah, we work with the district administration to kind of organize an onboarding process for the users. One of the great things about Five Lab is that you have a dedicated advisor that is here to support those building and district administrators. So we do meet frequently. It's not just a one training and then you're off and running. We do believe in the collaboration. And so that the trainings are all built in. So it is not, you know, you get three free trainings and everyone after that, there's a cost. The advisor is a part of the agreement and we set up continuous opportunities to onboard the current team. And then, of course, if there's any turnover, train any new team members as those come onboard.
And one other benefit about the dedicated person from frontline, a lot of the dashboards, they have a wealth of expertise. So that's something in the onboarding process. They help us develop the dashboards that they feel are going to be most useful to the district.
And the district is also part of really a wide network across the country of users. You know, I had shown some demo examples, if you were looking at the modules, but some really great ideas come across the country. The early warning indicator actually originated in Compton, California, and Palo Alto, California. Saw that on a demonstration. And, you know, they called us up and said, hey, I need that. We need that. How do we get it? And so then the advisor facilitates the addition of that. So you kind of have this collaboration that occurs across within the state, but then across state lines as well.
I have a couple of questions. If, for whatever reason, the district had a need for some sort of custom aggregator for students or a custom metric to apply across the student bodies, I mean, how is that done? Do we have to go to frontline and request this or how does that work?
Yeah, the district would make the request of the advisor. We would brainstorm to see, of course, do we have the data? And then if if we do, and it's within the framework of what we can do in Five Lab, then we look to put forth that that custom indicator. That that early warning indicator is a perfect example of that. We've had many iterations around that and that has just come from the collaboration. First and foremost, we want to make sure we have the data set and that we can calculate it in the manner that supports the district's work.
To add to that, once we have our initial data upload, adding additional data sets, as long as they have a common key, is fairly, is not, I won't say trivial, but it's a lot easier than the kind of initial onboarding. But if we want to say, oh, we have information about COVID testing, or we have information about COVID testing and quarantine and absences that we want to tie together and look at how it's affecting student growth this year. Those are things that we can easily incorporate those other data sets and start to kind of build that. And once you have those in there, you can continue to build the big picture of everything that you have.
And my second question has to do with data ownership. You know, basically, once we upload, who owns the data? Are we locked into frontline if we use this product? Can we get the data back out of it? And if we needed to, for whatever reason, go with another vendor? You know, who owns the data?
Sure, all of the data is, it's all of our data. So we still own the data. Frontline is the tool that we're using to analyze and manipulate the data. So there's nothing new that they're generating within frontline. It's just a data visualization tool.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you. It was a really impressive demonstration. Thank you so much.
Thanks. And thank you so much, Adam. Thank you.
Tonight, we have a policy review for Press Plus. So Press Plus is a subscription service that we subscribe to as a district to go over our policy manual and ensure that it's meeting state, federal guidelines, et cetera. So we have our Press Plus issue for 107. And we'll be voting on this on our next meeting. So Dr. Aubrey Tatum?
Okay. And I provided the board with kind of a synopsis, I guess, summary of some of the more relevant changes. New board members, part of our process is our press kind of does the work for us, right? They take all the updates and they make recommendations. You know, a lot of the updates for this particular press packet or footnote changes. Sometimes there's new legislation or new court cases or and it is kind of, I don't know, it's not trivial, but it not significantly relevant to us. So our attorneys usually, we take the press document and our attorneys also go through it to make sure that whatever press is recommending, it falls within the legal aspects of what we would want to adopt as a, as a district. So they review it, I go through it, and then as a board, you guys prove it. So this particular press packet was very heavy, I feel like, in footnotes, a lot of legal references. There were many idea reviews. I know Brenda has talked about policy reviews, but the nice thing about press is they do that review process for us. There are some policies, of course, that have been on the books, you know, for school districts since the eighties. And so or the nineties or even longer. And so what press does is every few years, they review those policies. They update it, they update if there's specific language updates or if there are new programs and things that have been implemented. So they kind of do the review process for us, which is kind of nice. So the document that you, I gave you kind of just about seven or eight revisions. The my first, Brian, this is kind of funny. And so my first time I did this, I walked the board through the whole packet. And at the end, John Dennett was really nice. And he said, you know, you don't have to like walk us through the whole thing. And I said, okay, I won't do that anymore. So now I just kind of give highlights and areas that are really relevant for us. So I'm just going to kind of highlight a couple. This first one, 2240, which is on your list, presses updating some gender language that they are including that the board, we already are doing this in a lot of our spaces, but that we would import masculine and or feminine gender, including gender neutral pronouns. So that is in 2240. The equal employment addition was just basically for 510. Telling school districts and our human resource departments that we cannot not employ somebody because of a conviction on their record unless it is a conviction that is that by law, we're not allowed to. There's certainly legally protected categories. And then there are certain categories that, you know, specific felonies and things like that, that we're not allowed to hire people. But this is, that was an additional ad. 6145 talks about us making sure that we're implementing specific programs for our migrant students. As a district, we've always been really involved in the migrant program. In Champaign County, we've housed a migrant program. So the press is recommending that we make sure that our migrant programs include things like found family literacy, information technology, making sure that our migrant families have access to appropriate education, health, nutrition, social services. So we work directly with, right now, Parkland has kind of been managing the migrant program and Lupe Vicone, our director of multilingual programs, works directly with them. Rantul also is kind of part of the group, the consortium that is part of that migrant student program that we utilize in the summer. A lot of our migrant students come just for the summer and they leave. And then there are some who come and they stay in our community a little longer. And they typically, they enter into our dual language program and they continue to receive migrant services, you know, after the school year starts. 6160 is basically adding language about making sure that districts have a transitional bilingual education program, parent advisory committee, we already have that. Our transitional bilingual programs. As you know, we have the Mandarin program at Key. We also have some of our Congolese students who are still considered TBB students. So we have a parent advisory committee that Director Vicone also leads that group. 6235 added a couple of footnotes about access to electronic networks, which as John said, we take our local responsibilities very seriously. So it basically was adding and trying to get to the right conclusion, adding some language to make sure that we were including some high school. And it was more of a elementary, just the Internet Protection Act and some of the SOCA things. Complaints about instructional curriculum and materials and programs. So 6260 basically was adding language, allowing parents to, if they want to object to a specific piece of instructional material, that they have the right to inspect, to object, to opt their students out, and that we should have a uniform grievance procedure. We already have that. We actually have a form already created. If a parent is concerned about something in the curriculum, they can submit that form to Mrs. Norton's office. And then she works with the family directly on their request. And then lastly, 890 was basically adding language, parent organizations and booster clubs, that the district's not responsible for an organization or club and their conduct, as well as we're not responsible for what they might put on their website or we're not responsible for their social media accounts and some of the things that they might post, misconduct or otherwise, that the district's not liable for any of those things. So in my review, though, for the big areas that I wanted to point out, I, our attorneys didn't pull out any other ones. Unless you guys have questions about any of the other specific policies.
Just a small, so, so what we see here in green should reflect all the changes?
So any policy that, yes, any, the green is anything new.
Okay.
So if they added a green there, it is something new. Yes.
So just a very, a small, the words importing gender occurs on page eight. But prior to that, there are a number of gendered words that showed up prior to that, particularly in new text about the superintendent, so 230 and 2130 for the board secretary. So somehow, when they caught that, I think everything above didn't get corrected. So it's, yeah, 2130 and 230.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, please review this and be prepared to vote on it on our next meeting. Well, please review this and be prepared to vote on it at our next meeting. Our action items tonight start with a ten dot zero one, the youth assessment center, grant school district agreement. Is there a motion before?
Who approves of the agreement?
Second.
Move to second. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Number Hassan Adken.
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Ogalski?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Pulaski?
Yes, motion passes. Last action of the night is the approval of the school maintenance grant life safety agreement. Is, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second. And is there any discussion?
Is this, did we discuss this at the last meeting? I just want to make sure that everybody's clear about what we
No, we did not. So if there are specific questions, this was, this is the first time you're seeing this. Randy, add it. Do you want to share anything about it, Randy or Carol? I know.
Just what you guys received, I'll talk a little bit about it. The school maintenance project grant is the dollar for dollar, Illinois State matching grant program. Program award is up to $50,000. You put it towards our facilities. And then it won't go over that $50,000. We have to put in at least $50,000. Three areas I've identified at the middle school are kind of our, there's kind of really four areas that really need work, thinking about, I was just doing three currently. They'll add up to about $168,000. And then that's, that's before the grants put towards it. So then we would do this work next summer.
Would the remainder of that be taken out by safety funds or?
I was just going to add, the reason we do life safety is because it's a better chance at the grant of getting awarded. It's a life safety item, so we picked a life safety item to actually apply for the grant. We did this last year and we did get the grant for another portion of the middle school route. We just forgot that it had to have board approval. We were ready to do October eighth and we're like, oh my God, we were reading through it. It's like, you've got to have board approval. So we immediately put it on Friday at three o'clock. So we got that. So.
A nice cut, Randy.
Anyway, we've done it before. And I don't think, if you don't get the grant, I don't know that we move forward. I guess it's.
We don't have to.
Yeah, but it'll be a life safety amendment that obviously we'll do eventually, but we've never done that. And it's a work that will probably end up, we need to do it.
You have two years to spend the money.
I think it was crossed. I say any further questions?
Yeah, my question was, yeah, last year we did it. Is this one that we've done lots of times or is it just relatively new? Yeah, well, it just goes to prove that what we've always had in our policies, always have a project in our back pocket. So when these opportunities come up. Never pass up free money. No, I'm so glad you caught it before like the three days are up. So yeah, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I hope we get it.
Thank you for the questions. Roll call, please.
Number Hassan Adken?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Ogalski?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Pulaski?
Yes, motion passes. Call for a future executive session. We do have one scheduled for a week from today at 6:00 PM for the BOE UEA roundtable. Where's that going to be?
And that will be in 1520 because, you know, we have our UEA members joining us, so not enough space here. But so we'll go back to 1520.
But it is a public meeting.
Yes, it is a public.
Okay. And there will be another meeting scheduled soon for student discipline shortly after that October 12th meeting. Superintendent's report?
Okay. So Linda hung around for this. She's such a trooper. So my very first slide is we're very excited that our splash program started, Splash in 21st Century. So at our, at Dr. Williams, Leo King, U M S Splash, and anybody that doesn't know yet, Splash stands for Students Learning and Playing and Learning After School Hours. So this is just a few pictures we took just in the last few days of students kind of working together. In those after school programs, the high school program will be starting later this month. We also, through our ESR funds, you know, we team for years, we've been very thankful to have the 21st Century Grant Fund. So we've been able to offer after school at Dr. Williams, Leo, King, U M S. And we've not had the funding to do that at our other elementary schools. So we're utilizing our ESR enrichment funds. We have designated money that, just like we offered summer school in every single school this summer. We are offering after school in every single school during the school year this year. So we're thankful to have those federal funds to do that. And Splash in 21st Century is a great model for our elementary schools. Dr. Williams, Leo, King have done a fabulous job over the years. And so our other, Wiley, Thomas Paine, and Yankee Ridge will kind of model off what we do for 21st Century at the other elementary. So thank you, Linda, for your hard work and all of the coordinators that are in the buildings. Again, it is, it feels like one more thing. I know they've been doing so much and it's something that they're used to doing, but they love Splash. So you know, we still have a lot of teachers staying after school with everything else they're doing with COVID. And so we just wanted to make sure we highlighted the program and and thank the coordinator, coordinators and the teachers that are still making it priority. October is National Principals Month, so I don't know if you saw this. Yay! So hopefully some of them, they're all probably exhausted and not watching. But we highlighted them on social media. We have a surprise for them that will be unveiled very soon. But this is just a a photo and graphic of some of our amazing leaders in Illinois. October 24th and 30th is Illinois's Principal Appreciation Week. And then there's a Principal Appreciation Day. So we'll be doing little fun, little things throughout the month to recognize them for all of their hard work. They've worked so hard and I'm just untirelessly with a lot that they, that is going home in their buildings. So I am kind of modeling the high school ID. I found my old ID that I've had for I don't know how long, but I pulled it out. And we are all wearing our lanyards. So last week at high school, and I'd say I was there today, and I asked Mr. Nance about how many, you know, I kind of walked around. You know, there were quite a few students wearing their IDs and lanyards. So I would say about 80% are doing that. And so we've been, Mr. Nance and Nancy have been putting out a lot of reminders. We're trying to remind students as well to model for students that they need to be wearing their IDs. And again, this is one of our additional safety measures that we've been talking about that we're incorporating at the high school. So I just wanted to say that in case there are any students watching to make sure you get your lanyard and get your ID. So we were able to have a, a great fall sports pep rally. We moved it outside to make sure we were honoring COVID protocols. So it was a fun hour. I guess we got to go out for about an hour. It was a beautiful day. And it was really nice to be able to see the students doing something normal and fun. I mean, we weren't in the gym, we were outside instead, but I think they had just much fun. We recognized the fall sports. We recognized our cross, our track team from the spring and their state wins and some of our state champions. So it was just a nice day of celebration. And just pretty good fun. That's Mr. Nance there in the tub of war. And the choir sang and he rapped and we had the band and cheer. So it was pretty, it was a pretty packed hour there at the end of the day on Friday. We did have a, our homecoming dance. We don't have any pictures there, but we had a lot of students who came out and they were, they wore their masks. They all had to take a COVID, participate in COVID testing prior to the dance. So everyone who attended had a negative COVID test. And they, they wore those masks, they danced and they had a fun time. So I went there just at the beginning, just to kind of, you know, wanted to see students having some fun. But it was a great event and it went, we were making sure that everything happened very peacefully. And it was just a lot of really healthy fun. So it was great on Saturday night. The U H S Civic Engagement Club was active this weekend also on Saturday. So some of our high school students here who participated in the, we all vote, and my school votes and the legal winner voters campaign there at the University of Illinois on Saturday. And this is Jeanette Delgado. She is a teacher at, she used to be a kindergarten teacher. Now she's a second grade teacher. She changed on me. But Jeanette has been involved in the, in a state pilot program, really working on how we can retain teachers of color and to help diversify the teacher pipeline. So she represented her banner with some other teachers from across the state. Jeanette's going to meet, reach out and, well, not reach out, she's going to meet with Angie and some of the HR people and share some of the work that, and some of the things that she's been learning as part of this program. So she was recognized with some other people from the state for her work and that effort. So upcoming dates, tomorrow is Walk, Walk and Roll to School Day. We, this is something we participated in, gosh, since what, 2004 or five? I can't remember, Linda. With the Safe Routes to School Group. So the mayor is walking at Dr. Williams tomorrow. Mayor Marlin, we have several University of Illinois student athletes that are walking. I think I'm going to walk at Thomas Paine. So you're welcome to the schools that you represent in the, in your, your sub-districts, you're welcome to walk to school with some of the students in your neighborhoods. Tomorrow is, no, Thursday is the first of the year, the Special Education Parent Advisory Meeting. Speaking of that, I have the district committee, I was planning to have it at your seats tonight, but now that we've got all the board member representatives on all of our district committees, those are being shared out that we posted on the website. I'll send them to you via email. We have just a couple of our directors who needed to tweak a little bit, a couple of their dates, but we've shared out the district parent teacher advisory dates, the district crisis meeting, the John's getting the technology group going. So all of these, there's a lot of work happening in multiple committees. So the parent advisory, Special Education Parent Advisory Group, their first meeting is Thursday. We have the UEA roundtable on Tuesday evening. We've seen the topics. We're talking about the teacher recruitment areas, subs, shortage, I'm brainstorming some ideas on how we can get more subs in the district, and then simplify subs, SEL, you know, health. And I think that's it. U H S Academic Monogram is next Wednesday at seven. So I apologize, you guys haven't received a personal invitation, but of course, you're all welcome. If you just let Lori know if you plan to attend, U H S, the monogram is not a open, not every student participates. It is based on grades and GPA. And so only certain students are invited, but it's a way that we recognize academic achievements from the previous year. So students who are sophomores, juniors and seniors are recognized for their efforts for the previous year. So the nice thing about monogram is the students get to invite a staff member to come on their behalf. And that's always my favorite part. Because you get to see elementary teachers, you know, like first grade and kindergarten teachers in the audience that some, you know, high school kid invited them because they were an important person to them. It's important in their academic career. So that's next Wednesday. Let Lori know if you plan to attend and we'll have a reserved seat for you. It's in the big gym. And it's nice, we'll be able to spread out and we use the floor and the bleachers. So there will be plenty of space. There's no school this Friday for elementary students. It's our first half development day. Then U M S and U H S have early dismissal. And then Monday, no school for fall holiday. Let's all be updates from me. No points today.
Board reports.
I have one. I would like to give a shout out to our own Ronnie Turner Winston. She's the president of the U H S, P T S A. She has been appointed to the State Education Equity Committee. So I really think that is fabulous. She does a great job. We're, I'm glad to have her here in Havana.
Any other board reports?
Was anybody able to make an offer for the mural today? I didn't make it, but.
Yeah, it was a really nice event. A lot of Park, Park District folks showed up there, probably 15 people. The artist was there, the mayor was there. And giant pair of scissors. It was really exciting.
Nice. Can't wait to see pictures.
I did not take any pictures, but they took millions of pictures of everybody. So they're, they, I think they had three different people with cameras. So it was well documented.
Don't forget that this Thursday is the upcoming Lineide Division Dinner, the Fall Dinner, right, that where I mentioned before, Brenda's our delegate for the, for the state, but I guess there's going to be some study study topics, breakout sessions after the dinner. So it'll be our first one in person for a long time. Yeah.
I did want to say, if you haven't had a chance to look at the Urbana High School Garden, it is amazing. So shout out to Dan Dooley and all the students, FFA kids that are doing great work on that. The cheerleading team has a 5K virtual run coming up, October 31st. It's a fundraiser for uniforms and choreography and some of the stuff they need for this year. I think it's 35 bucks for the run. And then I think I saw Summer Saba has a monocle fundraiser next Monday. So if you're looking for somewhere to eat, support them. And then there's a Habitat Community Garden unveiling in Urbana this Thursday. And one of our Urbana High School grads, I think maybe she graduated either last year or this year, Saba has some artwork in that garden. So if you're not going anything Thursday at 5:30, it's on the corner of Hill and Romine Street. And then I think the youth run is, is that Thursday or when was that?
The last run, I think it's, oh, it's tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow at Prairie Park, four o'clock. And then the cross country team will run after that. And sectionals on Saturday.
Very fun.
Lots going on. Any other reports? Hearing none, entertain a motion to dismiss, to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.